I called the June meeting to order. Did that scare you?
You're welcome.
It's now 6:30, so we need to go ahead and kick it off. Let me say welcome to everybody who's here for this meeting this evening. Good evening, council people and the city attorney. It's good to see you. I've been seeing you all day. We will, now, most of the time, we have pastors or associate ministers or whatever to pray for us to start our meetings off. I asked a minister of music this time because I have known him for quite a while. I'm not trying to put anything on you, force anything on you as far as pastoring is concerned, Tim, but I know he knows the Lord. Tim is a great supporter of the city and I know he knows the Lord. So, we're gonna go to the Lord in prayer with Tim Wilson this evening, who serves as minister of music for the Shammely Memorial Baptist Church. Tim?
Don't preach, Tim.
I can. Isn't everybody a minister? And Calvin said this was where I was supposed to stand, so I'm gonna follow protocol. I will tell you, it is a great honor, Ms. Barbara, Mayor Williams. I call, we, I've known everybody ever since on council, so I'm not as formal as some. We have in our state and in our nation in the last couple of days been hit with tragedies. We lost a sheriff of Montgomery County killed in the line of duty, and I think I read it's the first sheriff that has been killed in the line of duty in over twenty years in the state of Georgia. And then there were nine people worshiping in Charleston, South Carolina, in Bible study, when we feel like when we go to our place of worship, it's a safe haven. But apparently, the house of the Lord is not a safe haven from evil doers. And I feel that it's appropriate that we have a moment of silence for all of these victims, the sheriff and the victims of this senseless act in Charleston. So if you will, let's bow for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now let us pray. Adieu heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come to your throne at any time. We pray for the family of this sheriff and the families and fellow church members of these that lost their life in such a senseless act on last evening. We thank you that we can be a part of a city like Fort Valley, a great city. We thank you for its past leadership and we thank you for the current leadership that we have here in the city of Fort Valley. We thank you for your many blessings that you bring upon us each and every day as a city. And we pray as our mayor and city council at this time conducts your business, that they'll be under the guidance of your Holy Spirit. And we pray that you will be with each and everyone. We bless each and every family of our mayor and council as they serve tirelessly for the betterment of this community. We pray that you will be with each and everyone that calls Fort Valley home, that you will bless each and every citizen of the city of Fort Valley. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Tim. Can we stand for, to recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Very nice, Tim.
Thank you, Tim. All right, next on our agenda is the approval of our May meeting, May 21st meeting. We had this in your notebook on Tuesday night at the work session. You will have had the opportunity to read these minutes or review these minutes. I need to know what you, what you would like to do in regards to it.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of May 21st, 2015. Second.
Okay, motion by Bryant, second by Collins, that we accept the minutes of May 21st, 22nd, 21st. All in favor, let it be known by the word ahh.
Aah.
Aah. And the opposers have the same sign? No opposers, and the motion carries. Thank you. Now, our announcement, or may seem a little bit extensive tonight, but they are very We just enjoyed a wonderful peach festival this past weekend, this past Saturday, with people in and out of Fort Valley enjoying fresh peaches, straight off the trees, donated by the peach growers. And what started out with a wonderful parade, ended up with a wonderful concert and fireworks. Community, as well as visitors, enjoyed themselves. The children surely enjoyed themselves playing in the sand, and that's a wonderful sight to see. The Soul Purpose Band brought something that everybody enjoyed, from the youngest to the oldest. And we thank that committee that did the great job of planning that for us. Yesterday, some of us had the opportunity to attend a very monumental, monumental activity for Mill, Georgia, and for Peach County. And that was the dedication of the bridge that's at Highway 96, 75, off of 96 houses, Mill Road, right there, in honor of a citizen, a great man, a great economic developer, a great trainer of children. As you, as I said yesterday, I heard a delegation when he passed on talking about when they were young bucks, Duke and his friends, and how he chastised not just his own children, but others too. And that lead, that adds credence to, it takes a village to raise a child. And of course, we were sad to see him go, but certainly this was a great honor for he and his legacy, his offsprings, his grandchildren and great-grandchildren, wife, and so on, so on. It was a wonderful ceremony. In the honor of John David Lane Senior, and we called him Big Duke, and some called him Mr. Peach. So, anyway, and Little Duke is, yeah, Little Duke is carrying on that same tradition. I think he's truly a chip off the old block as far as making jobs, teaching young people the work ethic like they ought to, and of course, being kind-hearted to his, their fellow citizens. So we thank you for that. The next thing, we have training that's coming up for all your elected officials, which will be held, the Georgia Municipal Association Convention, which will be held in Savannah next weekend, the 26th through the 29th. And all of us, including the city administrator and I think, okay, the city attorney might not make it this time, but all the elected officials will be involved in training on Saturday and Sunday and some things on Monday. So, all roads lead to Savannah this weekend for us.
Next weekend.
Next weekend. As we speak, the FAME camp, which is held every year out at Fort Valley State University, and FAME stands for Fine Arts and Media Experience, we have about 150 students out there from all over the state of Georgia and out of the state. It's a great program. It started on June the 7th and will culminate tomorrow, June the 19th, with an art show at 3 o'clock in the Pettigrew Center. And the gala, which is a performance by each category that they have been trained during the week, starts at 4:00 PM in the Pettigrew Auditorium tomorrow afternoon. We also have students coming from all over the state and from out of the state for another freshman orientation out to the university. So, if you, if you see strangers out there or see adults that you have not seen in and out of our city, it's because of that event. And of course, I'll, we have been recruiting and a lot of things have been happening that we're trying to get students in. That will be tomorrow from 9:00 until 12:00, and that will be in the Pettigrew Center Auditorium or in the Pettigrew Center also. The construction on Camalia Boulevard is moving right along, and I think I say that every month, but it is moving right along. I believe they are winding down now, just about it. They missed the deadline for the asphalting, which should have been last, not this Wednesday, but last Wednesday, some other things they had to get done, and some, and so, but they're moving right along. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I had a merchant that called me this week and said, "The last time I talked with you, you said you saw, you could see the light at the end of the tunnel, but the lighting, the light seemed to be getting further and further." But anyway, we are still asking to be patient. It will be over after a while, and we have something we can be proud of. Now, we want the entire community to know toward the end of that process, East Main Street will be two-wayed again. If you will notice, the lights have already been placed up there, they just not have been put online yet. On the south side, headed toward Perry, will be diagonal parking, and on the north side, headed back up toward City Hall, will be parallel parking. And we expect that to happen within the next three, four weeks, probably. I mean, the construction will be over, but what we want to do is make sure we acclimate the people to the fact that this is going to happen. I tried it out the other day to see if it was gonna be, and my chief is stopping up at his ears because I came up the street the wrong way, and everybody was looking at the mayor like I was losing my mind, but what I was doing was checking to see, because we had some long trucks parked out there, to see if you could make it around those long trucks and people still meet you coming down the street, and it's gonna be okay. On July the 4th, we have the Friends of Aviation that's gonna be out at Lane's Southern Orchard, and they're gonna be offering helicopter rides. And of course, Bob Hamilton is gonna tell us a little bit more about that, but he and Jimmy Barnes has been getting that together for us. We are, we are offering rides to the public. I understand there is a Huey, which is a historical kind of helicopter, and there's a Cobra, which is a gunship, and our chief says, "Nobody rides that one until he gets a chance to ride it first." And then we have an L-19 Bird Dog, which belongs to our councilman, our councilman Jimmy Barnes, that's gonna be offered for, for public riding on that day. And we invite all of our veterans especially, and the public to enjoy, come out and enjoy the plane, the plane rides. On August the 15th, we will have our Back to School Bash at the festival park. That's, that's the time when the entire community comes together, give away school supplies to the children, have a good time, and that's usually coordinated by the, I think I Am Foundation this time. I think the diplomats will join in, and Hodak, and the city of Fort Valley, and usually coordinated by our city administrator, and she doesn't wanna take credit for anything, but she's the one that works hard at that. And so, come out and do that, and that will begin at?
From 11:00 to 5:00.
From 11:00 until 5:00, on August the 15th. Okay? August the 27th through the 29th, we will have our very first Axiom Back to School Jazz Festival. And of course, this festival is produced by Mathis Three Entertainment, which, which is a company that Mr. Richard Mathis, the grandson of Dr. William Mohead, who has passed away recently. Richard is a jazz musician in his own right. That Thursday night on the 27th will be movie night. We will go out and enjoy a movie. Friday night collegiate night with step shows and things that college students like to be involved in. And then Saturday afternoon and on into the night, the jazz show. Now, we have a great lineup of artists here. I won't name them all, but I'll give you this one, Victor, when I'm finished. But the head billing is going to be Mr. Jonathan White out of Arizona. You have Cenea Spencer, the Scott Dotson Band, Truth Be Told, and a lot of Sean Gates, a lot of others. And we have a local group of students from Mitchell's Academy down in Perry, and some more that's gonna be performing that night. You might even get the mayor to play a note or two at that festival. And so, we, bring your lawn chairs, come out and enjoy this performance. Early Bird tickets are now on sale, 'cause you can go online and get them, but Early Bird tickets are now on sale at various outlets. One of the outlets is here at City Hall, and the Early Bird special is $20 a ticket. Miss Lucas, see Miss Lucas about your ticket, and they will remain that price until on down in July. And after July, the Early Bird will?
And that's for the whole, the whole?
That's for all three nights. That's, that's for all three nights, the movie night, the collegiate night, and the, and the jazz show. Now, we intend to have some vendors there that will have all the good stuff you like to eat, like some barbecue. I think my, my chapter of Gospel Music Workshop of America's gonna cook some hot fish and have some hot fish sandwiches, things that you can enjoy. And so, come out, stay hydrated, some are gonna have some of that to keep you hydrated and so forth, and just have a, have a ball. Okay? Um, I think, I think that should be?
This weekend, right?
Uh, this weekend? Oh, yeah, the Boys and Girls Club is having their steak-to-stake banquet Saturday evening, starts at 6:00 at the Austin Theater, and of course, this is a fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club. Your council people are trying to pull double duty at that because our employees also have an awards banquet that night at 7:00 out at the Pettigrew Center. So we gonna run and eat steak and then run to our awards banquet also so that we can do, we do that quite often. And, and so, we'll try to do, try to be in attendance to all these events. Certainly, our employees deserve to see us, and certainly, our Boys and Girls Club deserves to see us.
The employee starts at 6:00?
Starts at 7:00. The employee banquet, and that's at the Pettigrew Center.
Both are Saturday, right?
Both are Saturday. The Boys and Girls Club banquet is Saturday at 6:00 at the Austin Theater, and the awards banquet starts at 7:00 at the Pettigrew Center. So, so we hope to see you at those things. Did I cover everything, council? Okay? I get everything? All right? Next is the Employee of the Month recognition, and we have two to recognize for this, one from Public Works and one from Public Safety. These recommendations come from the directors of those departments. From Public Works, we would like to recognize Mr. Benjamin Carpenter, and your director says, I don't know whether he's telling the truth or not, Ben has been a hard-working and dependable employee who has been employed with the city of Fort Valley Public Work Department since July 2011. He's courteous, respectful, who is responsive to requests from the citizens, being started as a temporary employee in our fleet maintenance department in July 2011, and worked hard to assume his current full-time position as stormwater supervisor for the stormwater division in March of 2012. He has been instrumental in maintaining maps and drawings, as well as the maintenance and repair of the city's stormwater collection system. He's one of our most dedicated employees and very valuable asset to the city of Fort Valley. And because of this, your director nominated you for Employee of the Month. Come on up, Ben, and I have for you a plaque and a check, and since you are not married, you can take your mayor out to eat with you. I'm sorry. And your name will also be placed on the, be placed on the wall out there with the rest of our nominees, awardees. Okay? Thank you so much. Let's applaud Ben. All right? All right. And the next one is recommended by your director, Jarrell? Jarrell has been with the city since Jesus was a boy, I think. Uh-oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to imply that you were that old. He's been with the city for 23 years. If you can remember, Jarrell was a part of that division, he's a part of the, he's a commander really, of the criminal investigation division. So since, since November of last year, his division has successfully investigated three major felony cases. His leadership and dedication was instrumental in the resolution of each of those cases. His devotion to our mission and commitment to excellence make him an outstanding employee. And of course, he has the respect of both the police officers as well as fire fighters. As you can remember, when we were investigating the rape cases and so forth, Jarrell put in a lot of, a lot of extra hours, probably more than what we paid him for. And so, we thank him so much for being a part of that and the work that he does. Come on up, Jarrell, and I can't share your, your check because you got, yeah, you got, yeah, you brought the boss. Okay. Congratulations on your being nominated as Employee of the Month from the Police Department, Public Safety Department. And of course, I would make him take me out of there.
Good job. You wanna introduce your wife? Deanna O'David Smith.
Taking a lunch, she gonna get a check.
All right. Thank you, guys, for the work that you, that you do for the city.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody that's here that's not on the list to address mayor and council that we didn't know about? All right? We have one guest that's gonna address mayor and council, in the person of Mr. Bob Hamilton. And of course, he promised to keep it short, but he's by no means stupid now. Everybody say, "Keep it short, stupid," but he by no means stupid, but he's gonna keep it short and tell us a lot in a small amount of time. Come on up, Bob.
Thank you. Over here, I see. There you go. Usually, I disappear behind photos. Is this on?
It probably had to be reset.
I probably forgot to push that button a while ago.
You didn't need it, Tim.
It probably had to be reset since that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. I know Billy's in the back there going, "That ain't gonna happen." All right. The reason I'm here is to give you an update on the Fort Valley State program for aviation. Currently, there's been progress and no progress. The progress was the meeting that the mayor attended with the governor's office. That went very well, even to the tune of us singing tunes from Top Gun in the elevator on the way down. One of the more embarrassing moments for all of us, but certainly one of the more enjoyable. And we're really bad at it, by the way. The, they probably, they were interested. I think a lot of the facts we presented to them, they'd never seen before. A lot of the facts we shared with them, they hadn't heard before. And in particular, the leadership there suggested that we take a statewide approach to pilot production. Why is that important? For those that don't know, I know the council's been behind this, so these figures are familiar to them. The production of pilots has dwindled since 1990 by about 50%, and cost of flight training and other factors have weighed in. At the same time, the demand for pilots worldwide has skyrocketed, especially in the Far East, Middle East, Africa, Brazil, and of course, Europe and America. So much so, that Boeing predicts over the next 20 years, we're gonna be short 533,000 pilots, and that's a shortage considering current production rates. It's a crisis that Wall Street Journal calls the biggest in aviation history. And what it means to us as individuals is that the whole world's gone to just-in-time logistics, meaning I click on the internet, my product gets shipped to me from the factory, and it's there in a couple of days. Especially if it's coming from overseas, how do you think it goes? It travels by aviation. This has become so much the norm that companies no longer warehouse as much as they used to. They don't keep stock or inventories on hand because it costs to do so. Those savings are sent to us. Right now, they're so short of pilots that foreign companies are hiring our pilots right out of the cockpits. Nationwide, this has been addressed by the GAO, industry leaders, and the consortium of six universities has studied this term, that they're now called poaching. It's so bad, the 27 jets at Express Jet are currently grounded for, among other reasons, no pilots. Cities like Fort Valley and Rapid City, South Carolina, are being impacted to the point where many are doing lawsuits against the government for more service, for more offsets to bring service into their town. If you lose our number-one trade leader, which is aviation, $56.5 billion in the industry for the state of Georgia alone, the largest employer in the state at 57, 58,000 people is Hartsfield, the busiest passenger terminal in the world is Hartsfield. 313,000 jobs are related to aviation in this state, and they're under threat because, you know, for all the maintenance and all the materials and production and everything else, if the airplane doesn't fly, nothing happens. The cost of sitting an airplane down can get to the point where the largest group of pilots in the country, and that's for United, have 9,600 pilots. If they lose just 374 pilots, their net profit for last year goes to zero. It's that critical. Literally, it threats our entire economy, which is about 5.4% of our GDP, or about 11.2 trillion jobs. So, we come up with a four years of hard work that involved the council, involved leaders in the aviation industry, to include a gentleman that was just inducted into the Aviation Hall of Fame. It involved organizations that were nominated for national honors, companies like Delta and others that were supporting all this effort. Four years of work. We presented to the Board of Regents a program that was turnkey at no cost to the taxpayer. What that meant is that industry was providing a lot of the dollars, and of course, the students were paying for some of it as well. This is turnkey. We're ready to go. Perry Airport has a flight training provider there that's considered one of the best by the FAA, and all we asked for from the Board of Regents was permission to begin training this fall. They turned us down flat. The rationale, duplication with the program at Eastman. When the vice chancellor came here in place of the chancellor to address the assembly at Pettigrew Auditorium, it became very apparent to those who were there, like the mayor, that this individual had not even read the proposal. They hadn't spent any time on it, yet they turned us down. So my question for you, for those watching in the audience through TV and other things is, what's going on? How is it non-elected officials can come into a community and dictate what the community's college can or cannot do? Cost us in the process an increase of 400 students, $9.4 million in gross revenue, and about $25 million in improved economic activity per year, with so much as a "how do you do?" I don't know about you, but this just doesn't feel right to me. This is not right, and as citizens, I'm asking that we don't stand for it. I'm asking that each and every person in the audience, the council's done this already, write letters to the governor, email, talk to the chancellor of the Board of Regents, she can click on the website and send an email to Dr. Huckamie, and ask them to be accountable to us for what they're doing. Right now, the program at Eastman is saturated. It can't keep up with the demand. So what is the problem? Duplication. Now, if duplication is an issue, why does every college have a PE program or a business program? See how ridiculous that is? So, my ask, my request, and I know the council's already doing this, and of the audience here, is let's get angry. Let's get out there. Let's let them know we don't, we want an answer and justification for those members on the Board of Regents and the Board of Regents staff that's headed by Dr. Huckamie. If we can do that and hold them accountable, then we'll get this. And you know what Fort Valley State means to this community, and how important it is culturally and otherwise to us. You know, producing students, these students that graduate, they were so excited that we had students signing up to go to Fort Valley State University just on the hope that this program would happen, just on the hope. They stand to benefit tremendously. Your average airline pilot right now makes over $200,000 a year, not to mention $3 million retirement and everything else. That's a lot of tax revenue and a lot of benefits to our young people. You know, the way I think about it, and I'll finish up there, the way I think about it is they not only took money out of our community that we need, they're taking the future from our kids too. So, by God, let's make them, let's hold them accountable and ask what the heck is going on and see if we can move this thing forward. Because we're ready to go. We just need permission to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
And thank you for observing our timeframe.
Did I really?
You did. You did. Yeah, you did.
I'm shocked at you.
I want, I want to say the same thing I said to a group of alumni from Fort Valley State University last weekend. Uh, it's time for the alumni not to go to sleep...
Oh, yeah, I am too.
...on the Board of Regents, like the disciples did on Jesus when he went up into the mountain to pray. Don't go to sleep. Let's keep our eyes open, uh, keep our minds alert, and say what we wish would happen for, uh, happening with Fort Valley State University. Now, it is, it is my, um, assumption that this Friends of Avi- Aviation is gonna plant us a plane out there in front of Fort Valley State University the night before we start the rides. So... So, so, um, that's very strategic, so thank you so much. Thank you, Bob, for your interest in, in your work, what you've done. All right. Let's go on now to our new business. And under new business, we have the redistricting or, uh, ordinance, the second reading of it behind tab number two, um, one, I'm sorry. Behind tab number one, um, you have the ordinance accepting, uh, the plan that we had talked about, the, the resolution. Now, we voted on this in the last meeting, but the, but the law says we've gotta do it twice. And so, um, this is an ordinance adopting and enacting an amendment to Section 3D1 of the Fort Valley Charter to provide new district boundary lines for the east and the west wards. And you have a copy of the version that we selected there. Uh, what do I hear in regards of it?
I move we pass this ordinance. Is that what you did?
Yes.
Then I second.
All right. Uh, moved by Collins and seconded by Lane, that we adopt this ordinance to accept, and I believe it's Plan Three, um, for our new redistricting, uh, section to become effective so that the city administrator can now send that information to wherever she needs to send it. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
Aye. And this will be in effect on...
Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, this will be in effect by this next voting.
As we have, I'm working with the people across the street, see if we can get it done.
Should be effective until, like, in November.
That's a notification that's had to go out and some deadlines.
All in favor of, of this, uh, adoption, let it be no matter word "a."
Aye.
And opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. Thank you. Behind tab number two is a resolution for you to adopt the policies and procedures for the CHIP grant. Now, the policies and procedures as discussed on Tuesday night, um, about this, uh, thing. And I have a copy, if you would like to get a copy of it, we, we, we highlighted some things. We have a grant administrator that's working with that. She has sent me, uh, the list of contractors that's being considered. She has sent me the list of homes that have applied, and I think as soon as we adopt these policies, then we are, would be ready for her to move on to the next step in doing what needs to be done. Um, what do I hear in regards of it? Now, this is for the 2014 CHIPS award, and we are in 2015 already, midway down, so it's time to start nailing nails. All right? What do I hear in regards of it?
I move we accept this resolution.
I second.
Okay. Motion by, uh, Collins and seconded by Barnes, that we accept the resolution. All in favor of it, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And the, uh, opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. Okay? All right. Uh, behind tab number three is a resolution for, um, uh, reappointing or appointing a person who, uh, to the Housing Authority to replace a person whose term has expired. And, um, that person is Mr. John Hampton, who has expressed a desire to be appointed to this board to replace, um, I did have it Tuesday night. Who's the person he's replacing?
Your term had expired.
Okay, okay, I gotta add another one. All right. Uh, Mr. John Hampton has expressed a desire to serve. What do I hear in regards of it?
I make a motion that we accept Mr. John Howard's.
John Hampton.
John Hamptons.
I second that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, all in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
Opposes the same sign. Now, behind that same tab is, uh, one to fill a vacancy. Um, I, all of these are filling.
All the filling vacancies, all you're doing is pointing people to fill those spots.
Okay, do I, can we go and do all of them then, or we need to do each one separately?
Let's do all of them.
Let's do all of them, all the ones that's left.
We've already talked about...
Okay, talked about them in our work...
We reappoint Mr. Lamario Bryant...
Well, we've already, what, okay, go ahead. We've already done one, so just do the rest of them.
Uh, Mr. Lamario Bryant, Ms. Gloria Flaylock, and Mr. Calvin Jones. And Ms. Henrietta Hartsfield.
Okay, there are four there, Mr....
Right.
Okay. Did I get a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, motion by Collins, seconded by Lane, that we reappoint, uh, or that we appoint the four names that were just called to fill vacancies on the Housing Authority. All those in favor of that motion, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And, um, opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. I apologize for separating that out. All right. The DDA, behind tab number four, we have, um, one person that has applied to fill a vacant spot for, uh, Mr. Shawn Salmons. Um, but we have not gotten the letter from the other person, right?
No, right. Shawn is, is...
Is that the only one?
We're appointing him to...
To a, to a fill a vacant spot. All right? Uh, all those in favor of adopting that resolution, I mean, uh, can I have a motion?
I move we adopt the resolution.
I second.
Okay. Motion by Collins, seconded by Lane, that we adopt a resolution appointing Shawn Salmons to the DDA Board. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Number five on your agenda is a resolution to declare, uh, some vehicle surplus. And of course, this is, this comes from, um, which department?
Both.
From both. From, from the Public Works Department as well as Public Safety Department. And you have your VIN numbers and everything down there, following the normal procedure for, um, supplanting property. I'll entertain a motion.
I so move.
I second.
Okay. Move by, uh, Barnes and seconded by Hester, that we adopt the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. Number seven deals with an adjustment, um, in, uh, a rej- uh, an adjustment for training requests. And this, um, resolution is regard... Excuse me, did I skip one?
Six. You're number six.
Oh, excuse me. I had already checked it. Behind ta- I'm trying to get out of here.
We're trying to help you.
All right. Behind tab number six, the police vehicle purchase, the investigator veh- vehicle. We talked about it. Um, you have in front of you a resolution, um, I'll, uh, what do I hear in regards of it?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution. Yeah, I second it.
All right. Motion by, um, Bryant and seconded by Hester, that we adopt this resolution. All in favor of it, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And opposes the same size, sign, and no opposers, the motion is carried. All right. Now, for number seven, the salary adjustment for the training, for training requests. And this is for a pay adjustment for, in the person of Mr. Bobby Johnson. And Bobby will be granted a 2% increase in salary, uh, if this resolution is adopted. What do I hear in regards of it?
I move that we adopt the resolution.
My second.
All right. Move by Bryant, seconded by Lane, that we adopt this resolution. All in favor of it, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
Opposes the same sign. No opposers, and the motion carries. All right. Last but not least, behind...
I forgot. Two more.
Sorry, adjustment.
She wanna do them all. Let me do them all.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we accept, that we accept the resolution for Mr. Roy Thompson and Mr. Paris.
Strictly.
And I'll second.
All right. Motion by Bryant and seconded by, uh, Barnes, that we adopt the resolution, um, for the increase to be granted to the next two persons' name. Uh, all in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
And opposes the same sign. No opposers, the motion carries. I apologize, y'all.
That's okay.
I just didn't prepare for this meeting.
No.
All right. All right, here, I'm just trying to hurry. All right. Behind tab number eight, um, is, uh, a, a resolution authorizing our Public Safety, uh, Public Works Director to purchase a tractor, uh, for the Public Works Department.
Ooh.
For, for the Public Works Department.
What was that?
And of course, the proceeds will come from the 2015 splash for this purchase. Um, I'll, I'll, uh, let me, uh, know what you hear in regards of that.
I'll miss what you...
I second that one.
Who's, who, who made the motion? Okay, ba- motion by Barnes and seconded by Bryant. All in favor, let it be known by the word "a."
Aye.
All opposes the same sign, and the motion carries. Thank you.
I'm not gonna tell people we have discussed these before.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's, it's just not just coming out of the blue and, and we are unsure about, uh, whatever. We've had it, we had it in our committee meetings, and we've had it, uh, Tuesday night in our work session, so, um, now, that gets the business, uh, of the meeting now to committee reports. And we will start on this end with the Police Department and, and come around this way. Ms. Bryant, for the Public Safety Department.
Personnel.
Uh, okay, do yours first, personnel.
We had a new firefighter, a much-needed firefighter. Um, the fire report for June, we had 15 medical assists, three false alarms, three public service calls, two passenger vehicle burns, one assist police, one authorized control burn, one vehicle accident, a brilliant cleanup, one motor vehicle accident, which involved a pedestrian, one dumpster fire, one gas leak, one electrical wiring problem, one cooking fire.
What did I mean?
Inspections, we inspected the Phoenix Center, Edwards Funeral Home, El Mago, Doto. I might not be right. Flash food. Not in Manitoba. Flash food, bash, flash food. Kings Deli, Spencer Auto, Peach Automotive, Lays Hair Salon, Fort Valley Hardware, El Tapatio. C and E fitness class training, we had 60 hours of physical fitness, 40 hours of leadership, 14 hours of driving training, 15 hours of basic fire, BLS instruction, we had eight hours, eight hours of pump operation, three hours of tactical operation, and five hours of administrative service activities. Fire safety at Sunset Bank, fire safety at Trinity Baptist Church, police. One robbery, two aggravated assault, nine burglaries, 25 thefts. Total calls for service. Okay. Calls for service reactive, 1,041. Incident reports filed, 508, 11 warrants served, 71 tickets issued, 30 traffic accidents, five drug arrests, 28 custodial arrests, eight to motorists, 18, 93 alarm calls, 69 escorts, nine prison escorts, three funeral escorts, 115 suspicious persons. Total training hours was 133. Traffic stops was 16, which went down from last month. Juvenile problems was 20, which went up from last month. House watch requests, four. Security checks performed, 274. Unsecured doors found, three. Nine welfare checks performed, 46 animal truck control calls, and 15 911 error calls. And, uh, Chief, I know you wanna add something.
Yes, ma'am. Um, as you know, the National Labor Department passed a bill, I think it was House Bill 160 or something, that, uh, authorizes fireworks. We've been putting in a series of fireworks, saying it on our Facebook page, on our Twitter account, just to remind everybody that fireworks, uh, if you have any questions about it, you can get to the fireworks authority, Bill 331, Bill 911. But as with everything, please be safe. It's almost dangerous, being smart to do crazy things. Uh, July the 4th is coming up, so just to remind everybody that we'll be conducting safety trainings to the fire department. If anybody has any questions, please give us a call.
Um, uh, Chief, I saw something on the Facebook that, um, Mr. Bobby Barnes caught last night out behind the shopping center. Was that a controlled burn of the county fire department, or were we involved in that? Was it last night? Well, maybe it was the night before, and I just saw it last night.
There was a big one that I saw.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, anyway. Uh, let's do, be careful because, um, my, my, my thermostat in my truck's at 104 degrees today. I thought I was gonna burn up in there too. So let's be careful. Another thing we need to be careful about, children are out of school now. I noticed she said juvenile whatever is up, and we expect that to happen more if we don't keep them involved in something. So let's find things for the children to do. Okay? All right? Yeah? Find it.
Each person take one of those. I'm gonna be real quick. As y'all know, what we usually try to do is talk about cash and also our budget. Now, I've just given the, the council, uh, list of how much we have in each account in May, and I want y'all to notice, uh, is everybody going, look at the front page of what I just gave? All right. I'm always interested in one, excuse me, uh, general fund, regular savings, and payroll. Those three accounts, all the other accounts have specific income and I go, but those three accounts are the ones that we operate out of. We've talked about that before. And so, I think it's pretty good to add those three up and see where we are each month. And so, I've just done that for us for May and April, and we've come... Anyway, in April, we had 1,000,000.4, and in May, we had 1,000,000.2. Uh, anyway, the other thing I want us to notice is we no longer have anything in the splash 204, 'cause we'd spent that, we'd actually already spent it, but transferred it from general, from the splash can into general fund where we'd spent it. So we, that's eliminated. Now, we got the rest of our 2,008 splashed money, and so, we have a total in that now with, but we, we got places to spend it, don't worry. Uh, 2 million plus, and fif- 2,050,222, plus that 429, I sort of make it messy, but you, anyway, that's how much before we, we spent some this month too. Now, we could've spent some on the, uh, some of that splashed was for the, is going to be for the investigator's, uh, car, and then we just bought, which we had already voted on before, so we didn't have to vote on it tonight. We just bought two police cars out of that for a total of 88,000. So those come out of the splash, not out of our, um, operating. Now, one other thing, starting next month, we'll have another account, the 2015 splashed, and that is a six-year splash. Uh, we, anyway, we're supposed to get hopefully over six years. The city hopefully will get 3.9 million, and it's, uh, specified in our, in what we voted, what we discussed, how much goes to each... how much goes to each thing, you, it has to be capital expense, uh you can't use it just for a general operating. But this month, we've gotten our first uh money from the two thousand and fifteen and it was forty-three thousand and something, and that was just for one month. And we did use that, which we, we legally could do it, for that tractor, okay? So that is, questions on that? All right, now the, I, I, this is what we get every month, but I, I don't go over it all here. The, the three, four pages, I sort of wanted to mention that I wanted y'all to look at. Page one is, shows what happened in May, now, it was March, April, but that was a mistake. May was a good month. All of our expenses in May were under what one twelfth of the budget should have been. So we did good expense-wise in May. Now, I've got the word explain up here, these percentages go with the yearly, so they should really be on the next page, and next month they will be, okay? Because we are over in some uh like, well, I'll talk about that on the next page. In other words, we did okay monthly for May, but in yearly, we are way over in government buildings and in uh, well, that's the only one. Oh, okay, now here's a good thing. So far, look at the very bottom, the original budget, sixty-five percent would be five hundred and nineteen thousand for the health insurance, I mean, it would be a little less, that would be sixty-five percent, and May should be sixty-seven percent. So in general, and this is correct, Martha, right, as of now, we're doing pretty, we're doing okay in health. We, we budgeted enough for health so far, all right? Now, the next page is uh the year-to-date totals, and we're not as good on year-to-date. Everyone that's got a parentheses, that sort of always makes you know that's to the bad, okay? So there's one, two, three, four of the divisions that we have overspent for the year as far as our budget goes. I, I, the reason I did these four pages, I would like for all of us, when we get that big thing in the, in our boxes, to look at the first two and then, then also page one and page three, I'm gonna talk about on the budget comparison, okay? Now, look at page one, that looks like this budget comparison, uh that again, you see, general government buildings, we're over, we're a hundred and eight percent. Uh in other words, we haven't spent over our budget, but we've spent over the amount we should have spent by the end of May, okay? All right, uh the senior citizens center, uh the reason that looks like it's, excuse me, the senior citizens center, we had to put a new roof on, and that's why that was as high as it was. But the Spruce Street Pool looks bad, one oh three percent, but the reason is, we got a grant to cover the walking trail. So whenever you look at these percentages, if it's over sixty-six percent after two-thirds of the year is gone, then you gotta say, what happened there? Now, government buildings, we've spent a lot on our government buildings. I mean, y'all know what all we've done, we've redone the, the, the women over there, we've redone the hall, we're redoing back here, we spent a bunch of money on the government buildings. So that's one reason we're over the, what we budgeted for. Okay, now, the other thing that I want to talk about, I, I'm trying to keep it under five minutes too. But we fix it, we're getting into budget season. And the, there are two main things that have to do with your budget, and one is of course income and one is expenses. You want your income to be as high as it can, you want your expenses to be as low as it can, everything else being equal. Our budget this year, we budgeted a deficit of about two hundred and seventy-three thousand, I think. All right, now, you can make es- make mistakes two ways, and I'm afraid, I hope I'm wrong, that we have over budgeted for income for other year's property taxes. Now, we've sent out all the letters, and we'll know probably in a couple of months how we come on that, right? In other words, we sent out letters and say, and either pay or it's go get sold and that's it. Now, we're okay on this year's property taxes, buyer. We're real good on last year's property, 'cause we sent the same mean letter about last year's property, and that's just one year, so people have come in and paid, and we have paid two hundred percent of what we budgeted for, not what they owed us. We never get more than people owe us, of course. But we budgeted a hundred and fifteen thousand, and I, I, I'm not the type to say I told you so, but if I were, I'd be saying it now, 'cause I thought that was over budgeted then, and I, I do hope I'm wrong. But we budgeted to get a hundred and fifteen thousand for prior years, not last year, but prior before that. We have only received sixteen thousand, and we budgeted a hundred and fifteen. So I hope we'll be getting it in the next couple of months, you'll see a lot of activity up here. So those are the things I just want us to, to look at, and we gotta be talking, thinking about a lot of stuff when we work on our next year's budget.
Thank you, thank you, Beth. All right, uh do economic development.
Well, I think our economic development consisted of a trip to Atlanta with uh Mr. Bob Hamilton, we didn't have a formal meeting, but that was the highlight of the month.
Got a lot accomplished with Matt, thank you.
You did better than me. He did better than me on time.
Five seconds, yes. Mel?
All right, the Administrative Department, on city complaints, we had two inoperative vehicles, twenty overgrown vacant lots, one house scheduled for demo, five houses scheduled for court, title searches on houses were twenty-six. We had one closed business, an application approved on three, and an application pending on four. Community service workers' hours were two hundred, Health Department complaints were two.
Thank you, did a good job.
All right, Public Works, all right, during the month, the girl answered over eight hundred and forty calls. Now, that's a lot of calls, in my opinion, and four hundred and fifty-five, they were redirected, uh three hundred and eighty-five were for Public Works divisions. We collected ten thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars at the gate, is what I'm gonna call it, or other bills that uh Public Works bills out, which is about average of what we're doing right now. On the sanitation report, we did twenty-six service calls for broken carts, sixty-two work orders for picking up yard debris and leaves. Uh we didn't sweep any streets because we are trying to get our street sweeper going, guys, so we know what's happening there, so anyway, working on it, we're gonna, that's, that's where that goes. We hauled uh eight hundred and seventy-nine point two-five tons of regular household garbage and twenty-two and a half tons of construction demolition, which I, is about one house that I think we demolished. And uh that was for sanitation, with the fleet maintenance, we saved two thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-five cents for the Public Safety Department, that's just doing the in-house maintenance on their vehicles. And I'm gonna do a, an analysis of how much we've saved over the past two years at Public Works, instead of having to farm this out and to show you absolutely enormous number of what the money that we saved for the Public Safety Department, you'd be really amazed.
Can I say something about that, Mr. Warren?
Yes, sir.
Not only does it save us far as material and manpower, but it takes, my guys are actually out there on the police work, instead of having to take vehicles, you know, deliver and carry and other places, they just shoot them out into Public Works and really saved the citizens a lot of time as far as efficiency of the agencies with.
That's good, so it's time, isn't it?
Thank you, Chief, appreciate that. All right, on our stormwater report, uh we haven't been doing much mapping of the system, we're trying to finish the retention pond and get it squared away, so EPD will stay off our backs, that's the bottom line, well, you know, those are the people we don't want on. Uh I have a list of a bunch of stuff they've done, but it's about being how close is it on a percentage basis?
Um I'd say on a percentage basis, I mean, we're, we're around the seventy to seventy-five percent completed, I mean, as far as what we can do, uh we are almost complete, but we are still gonna be liable, or held liable, um under our N O I until the discharge uh points are actually installed by a subcontractor or whatever we decide to go with. So we have Carter and Slu working on getting some quotes, things of that nature, we have had, uh we have had EPD that decide a few times. You know, we keep giving the thumbs up, we're doing a good job out there as far as keeping our, setting the control under control. It's just, uh it's a constant battle, we have got real sandy soil out there, um we're constantly, uh you know, lining it, turning it, trying to get the pH up, to get grass to grow, uh you know, before we file an N O T, uh we have to have a ninety percent vegetative percentage of density um before they'll even accept an N O T for months.
Got you.
So, um especially with all the banks we have, it is just, it's, it's a constant battle, you know, trying to get that stuff to grow, so. But I'd say uh if everything turns out, as far as um estimates come back in council, I guess we'll be presenting with them, um and, you know, we'll, we'll go from there, and um I'm hoping, you know, in the next few months, we can get this thing wrapped up.
Very good, and also the mapping of Carter and Slu, get all that mapping done too, 'cause we're about, what, seventy-two to seventy-five percent?
Yeah, we're, we're working on that.
We got that too. Okay, thank you, Ben, for helping me out there, and that's my report.
Thank you. We do want to ask the public uh to keep their children away from that pond, uh where there's water, that attracts children, and until we can get that fence around there, it's um, it's, it's, it's not good, and so we ask you that you, that you, that you don't allow your children to go swim in the pond. And the other thing, um when you see um the water shooting up like a fountain, it's not done for beautification, it's done to keep the mosquitoes uh from growing and, and infesting that area right there, so it, I, I mean, it'll, it'll make, to beautify it, but yeah, it'll beautify it, but that's not the main reason, the main reason is for health, to keep the mosquitoes from doing.
Excuse me, Beth, do we have an idea about wind defense? I know he's getting a price on it.
He was, he was doing an estimate on it.
Yes, ma'am, um we've got two estimates, um they should be in by Monday or Tuesday, um we've got two.
And then if the estimate's in next week, then how long do you think?
I would say probably, uh as soon as we vote on one, probably week, week and a half, they could be up. We actually, uh we got our signs in um today, we're uh actually tomorrow, we're gonna be out there installing, uh we have fifteen no swimming, no trespassing um signs that we're gonna put all around, so.
Yeah.
Um those will be up tomorrow afternoon.
Um to install the signs, y'all, y'all know as, when y'all were young bucks.
Growing up.
Need I say more? But anyway, yeah, we, we'll be working on that. Um the other thing that I wanted to mention to us is, we have a grant that has been awarded to uh Fort Valley for a walk trail that will encompass the festival park and tie in to the walk trail out at the Spruce, Spruce Street area, um uh awarded by the Department of National uh Natural Resources. Eighty-seven applications were turned in, and out of the eighty-seven, twenty-seven were awarded, and one of those twenty-seven was Fort, Fort Valley, to the tune of a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and what have you. So um I think that's something to be, as well. Okay, do we have anything else for the good of the council tonight?
I'm a with you.
Need a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. The ones who will, yes, that's, go ahead and say.